Can I get everybody's attention?
Speed up, guys.
Can I get everybody's attention?
All right, um, can I just, I'm sorry, can I, since we don't have a full house, I need, you know, you need to close these doors so that sound can bounce off the doors.
All right, you ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm gonna call an order for a special meeting Thursday, October 17th, 2024. Tonight, we're gonna go over some, uh, just informal information to give y'all to make sure, because when I had a conversation with a few people last meeting we had, I said, once we'd learned some stuff, we would make sure everybody knew. So, we've had stuff set to us, we've had stuff we've researched, and we wanted to give y'all some answers that y'all had been asking. So, I would like everybody to be nice and calm in this meeting, because there's no sense to raise our voices to each other. I mean, y'all, there was a lot of tragedy that happened all around the city, in the Highlands, and I think everybody needs to be respectful of each other. So, if, if we get out of order, I'm gonna ask you one time to please stay in line and don't make out first. If you cannot do that, I'm gonna ask you to leave, because we need to make sure everybody understands exactly what needs to go on in this meeting, and what, what everything is looking like at the Highlands. Mr. Mayor, you wanna take it off?
Uh, yes, sir. So, as you can, as you know, City Clerk Sims has been handing out some of this paperwork. Unfortunately, we don't have enough packets for everybody, but we have a cover sheet that everyone can have a copy of. If you don't have it, they're out in the front. If you don't wanna mess with that tomorrow, this will be posted on the city website with a link that you can access all this information. Basically, what it is, it's 15 bullet points, the historical documents, talking about the Highlands this evening. And just so that you don't have to take my word for it, we substantiated all these comments in the package behind it. And you can see that, number one, you'll follow it, one, two, it'll be labeled as two, so you'll be able to follow along tomorrow when you can look at a copy, and you don't have to take my word that what I'm saying is the truth. So, I'm gonna go ahead and get started, and give you a brief history of, of the Highlands. Number one, on March 2nd of 1962, an agreement between Travelers Insurance Company of First Party and Drayton Hasty, Fernanda Hasty Hazard Reeves, and Annette Reeves, Second Parties, and Bowling Spring Lakes Incorporated, and Reeves Broadcasting and Development Corporation, Third Parties. Set agreement stating that the Second Parties bought all the lands from the First Party, and then conveyed the land to the Third Party, Bowling Spring Lakes Incorporated, a subsidiary of Reeves Broadcasting. Documents under number one in this package. Number two, from 1961 through 1989, apparently several plat maps were recorded with Brunswick County Register of Deeds for different areas around the city. November 22nd, 1996, plat map of Section 17, the Highlands, was recorded with Brunswick County Register of Deeds in Book G, page 96. This document was prepared in October 1970, and revised in December 1971, as stated there on. Number four, September 15th, 2002, Brunswick County Stormwater Ordinance was enacted. Number five, September 1st, 2009, Bowling Spring Lakes Resolution to Adopt UDO, which became effective October 15th, 2009. August 18th, 2017, Board of Commissioners Special Meeting Minutes to Review a Memorandum of Understanding with Sandco. September 5th, 2017. I'm sorry. Number eight, December 5th, 2017, Board of, no, let me back up a minute, I'm sorry, I said the same thing. Number seven, September 5th, 2017, Board of Commissioners Meeting Minutes to Authorize Mayor to Execute Memorandum of Understanding with Sandco. December 5th, 2017, Board of Commissioners Meeting Minutes to Resend Previous Memorandum of Understanding and Adopt a Revised Memorandum of Understanding with Dominion Land. Number nine, January 29th, 2018, Board of Commissioners Public Hearing Minutes on Special Assessment Sewer District for the Highlands area. February 6th, 2018, Board of Commissioners Meeting Minutes for the Resolution Directing the Extension of Sewer Be Undertaken. Number 11, February 2018, it appears that most lots in the Highlands were purchased by BSL Land Holdings, which was Nathan Sanders. Number 12, June 5th, 2018, Bowling Spring Lakes Ordinance to Repel Current UDO and Adopt Updated UDO. June 4th, 2019, Board of Commissioners Meeting Minutes Requesting That Petition for Street Improvements by Dominion Be Tabled Until July 2019 Meeting Does Not Appear To Have Been Drawn Up Again. 14, June 15th, 2020, Covenants and Restrictions for the Highlands Recorded with the Brunswick County Register of Deeds. If you'll see page 15 of the covenants that states maintenance of the ditches are the responsibilities of the lot owners. Number 15, three short excerpts from, one, common law vested rights from land use law in North Carolina, the Bible of Land Use Lawyers in North Carolina written by David Owens from the School of Government, excerpts from the Brunswick County Stormwater Ordinance, the generally applicable reg, applicable regulation, and three excerpts from the Bowling Spring Lakes UDO regarding effective date and that the Brunswick County regulations apply. So, you're probably asking yourself, why all these dates? And you ask us why the Highlands were able to be developed the way that they were. It's because they had vested rights to develop under the rules and regulations that were in place in 1970. That was prior to the existence of any county or state stormwater regulations. That's why that development was built the way it was. The city had no choice when they brought building permit applications to us, but to approve those. I'm gonna let our attorney, Mr. Robert Hornick, explain a little bit about vested rights to you, that, that will give you a better explanation than what I can of why this development was allowed to happen. Mr. Hornick?
Thanks, Gordon, and I'll try to be brief about it, but vested rights is a legal theory. It was first kind of recognized in North Carolina in some case law by the State Supreme Court in the early 1970s or late 1960s. Smith versus Towne Hillsborough, not that that makes any difference, but that's the name of the case. And what vested rights, common law vested rights means is that when a property owner or developer invests in property based on an approved plat or permit for the property, and makes what's called, what the courts call substantial expenditures in reliance on the approval, then they, even if the rules change down the road, they're allowed to continue the development under the rules under which the development was adopted, okay? Or approved. So, here's, here's what it really means with respect to the Highlands. The Highlands was platted in 1971, plat was recorded in 1996. When, I, I think it's Dominion or acquired the property, or Sandco, they acquired the lots in, in the subdivision, the streets had been done to a certain extent, and other improvements have been made, they acquired vested rights to develop the property, to build on the property the way that property was laid out in 1970. If they had started from scratch today, they probably wouldn't be able to do what they've done out there now, because the rules have changed. But because they acquired the property after a substantial investment in, in the property, they are allowed to continue the development based on the rights that they acquired in 1971 or 1996, before any of today's regulations were adopted. And, and that's part of, part of the legal problem that, situation. But, but that's, that's part of the legal issue with respect to what could be done now. The owner developer has certain rights to continue doing what they've done thus far, not subject to today's regulations because they had vested rights. That's, we'll come back to questions in the audience in a little bit. That's a 30,000-foot view of it, but that's generally an explanation of the vested rights situation with respect to this property.
Thank you, Mr. Hornick. So, one of the other things I'd like to bring to your attention to, when this subdivision, this development was approved, and it came before the board, there's nobody that's sitting on this board, there's nobody in this administration that was in a decision-making position to authorize this development. None of us were here. So, please take that into consideration. We're not here to hurt you, we're here to try to help you the best way that we statutorily can. And unfortunately, we have to follow the law, and, and, you know, we can't operate outside of the law. So, so please understand that. We understand your frustration, we understand that you wanna get this resolved, but understand we have guidelines that we have to work within. And other than that, Mr. Mayor, that's really all I have to say for, for this part of our report.
And just so y'all know, we, we're not here to try to fight against y'all or anything like that, but the problem is, once that was born as an HOA, we just cannot come in to an HOA and do anything without the HOA reaching out to the city and asking for help. And none of that has happened, not one time. So, I don't know who your HOA president's, all that is, but it's up to the HOA to reach out, since that is what has been developed down there. Because it, it's against our, to be able to go in a HOA and do anything because of y'all's rules. And I've lived in a HOA, and I know those rules, because I had to follow the same rules when my place flooded. So, it's, I understand your frustrations, I understand everything that y'all are going through. It's not like I haven't lived through it. And something else I've tried to do after our last meeting, I called the governor of the state after our last meeting we had, and do you think I've had a phone call back? No, I haven't. Because I'm trying to push as hard as I can for us to get a female declaration here, and we still haven't got that. We still haven't got that answer. So, I, I've been working on trying on y'all's behalf as much as I can. We've also, since we came on, tried to tighten up some of these rules, because we don't think these planted lots should be able to be built the way they build them, and have no protection for the homeowners. So, we're working on stuff to try to put in place to be able to help in the future, but we wasn't here when all this happened. I mean, there's nothing we can do legally. But y'all need to know everything that went on, and y'all need to know how you need to move forward, because unless something like this happens again, and your HOA reaches out to us, there's nothing we can do legally. Not one thing we can do. Now, I'll open up the question and answer, if you don't mind coming up to the mic.
Could you state your name and your address and speak directly into the microphone, please?
Yes, good evening. My name is Barbara V. Reynolds, and I live on South Shore, and I spoke several weeks ago. My hearing, what the town attorney just said about a vested rights, vested rights I'm taking is that plot that the, that Highlands is sitting on, even though it was divided into homes, correct? Would my home, my plot be considered vested rights?
I'm sorry, Barbara, South Shore?
Oh, yeah, this is just about the Highlands.
This is just about the Highlands, ma'am.
Can you answer that question?
I don't know nothing about your lot, I, tell me about it.
Okay, I'm on South Shore, a little over an acre, and my lot receives 125, 50% from, from 50 lakes all the way over. I just had another person from away from the area, Myrtle Breach, he had a big piece of equipment in this past week. He came in and cleared out the easement from under the road all the way to the lake.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but this meeting has just strictly to do with the Highlands? If you have any question?
This has to do with the Highlands, ma'am. The water comes from the Highlands all the way over, so if you're patient, I'll get through this, okay?
But anyway, thank you. But anyway, sir, South Shore receives all of it, from the Highlands forward or over, because the Highlands sit up here, South Shore sits down here, it just runs across the golf course. So, if you don't have a cleared-out, deep trench, I have a, now a four-by-four?
That has nothing to do with this situation we're talking about.
Sir, it does.
No, it doesn't. It's totally different.
The water that collected there, because of poor drainage, affects each and every one of us.
But that's the problem, that's, we're talking about the Highlands. We have nothing to do with their ditches, their drainage. The city has nothing to do with that.
Thank you. But, um, I just want to say, I just wanna say that this has been an ongoing...
You can all leave.
This has nothing, this is all about trying to help with the Highlands, is what we're trying to do. Yes, ma'am, if you'd like.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Brayden, I live in the Highlands at 930 Westway. Just jotting down quickly what you guys quickly went over. I just wanna verify that if the city is not responsible, then it is Logan and everybody else that we need to get in contact with, okay? So, that's something that we have to spend money to try to figure out.
And just, if something like this happens in, in the future where stuff's flooding, all we need for us to be able to react is the HOA to reach out to the city and say, "Look, we've got problems here, could you assist us?" And the city's not in it to try to go against anybody.
And I understand that, so, along with that, okay, I do have, I have been in contact, okay? I do know there is a lady that is in charge, the president of the HOA, who nobody can speak to, however, Jade is the manager. I have called her last year when the hurricane hit and our yards flooded halfway, I also have contacted her twice this year, and so what she has told me, and I have in writing, is that she and the president has been in contact with the city about the issue about the drainage. I'm just telling you, I have that in writing.
I know.
Okay, so, that's what, so how are we supposed to get the HOA to contact you if they're telling us that you are, or they are?
This is the thing, we cannot have anything flood to the golf course from the Highlands until they finish what they need to do, and they haven't done that.
You mean necroconstruction, like for all the...
Yes, yes. Now, that's, and we can't do anything about that until they do their part.
So, then they shouldn't be allowed to sell homes until that's fixed.
The law doesn't allow us to run water and flood somebody else.
I understand what you're saying, however, and I do understand about the, the plat, plot, whatever, which is, you did mention that it changed, so the rules have changed? The laws have changed?
The laws that are in effect today are far different than the laws that were in effect in 1996 and 1971.
Okay. How long has that changed?
I couldn't tell you that.
It's been a while, but just because that, they got that, they're just locked in, and so it doesn't matter what changed or when it changed.
Essentially.
Unless someone brings a lawsuit in here, so.
Right.
They don't have to apply building codes and all of that? Like, they don't have to apply current building codes for structures?
If you could address your, give me your name and address if you're gonna be asking a question.
Her name is Anne Marie, and she's 920 Westway, right? 940? Okay. So, what is the city working on to try to fix this? Besides what you can control, what are you going to do? What do we need to do? So, do we need to harass the HOA to contact you?
Well, problem is, they've got stuff they need to finish, and that hasn't happened.
So, there's nothing we can do until Logan is done.
Can I address this? For the last two years, we've been in conversation with the developer of that project.
Logan Homes?
That's not the developer of that project.
That's just a builder.
It's not, that's, those are builders.
Sell Holdings.
No, it's not BSL.
On our property taxes.
Okay, so, the developer... Am I okay to say the name?
So, BSL Holdings is a, is a holding company of the developers. They have different holding company names.
Is it, am I okay to say the name? So, we've been in, in contact with the developer of that project, Nathan Sanders, and his development arm, and we are not happy with stormwater in your neighborhood. We've been working on this for a couple of years, and to this point, we have identified some issues that we would like to see resolved. One of those issues being a stormwater pipe that is on private property. The city has agreed to lower a pipe on Golf View by 10 inches if the developer will replace that pipe at the golf course. That should help drainage over there. Unfortunately, to this point, we've not got any feedback from the developer about whether he's got permission from the private landowner to, to, to do what needs to be done on this pipe. So, we're kind of at a standstill, waiting, waiting on him to make his move, because if we lower our pipe on, on Golf View, it's not gonna do anything but make the problem worse. So, for that pipe to be lowered, the developer has to resolve that issue on that private property. And so, we've been working on that for the last couple of years. We've asked for a, a stormwater plan for him, showing his inverts there, so we have the proper drainage. That's all I'm, that's as far as I'm prepared to go on that particular subject, but know that we have been in constant contact. Well, I won't say constant contact, because we'll talk and, and we'll reach an impasse, and then it stalls, and then we'll reconvene, and then it'll stall, and, and so that, that's where it's at.
Okay, so, at least you admit that there is a problem, okay? And I see that you're attempting to do as best as you can, but what does that, where does that leave us? Where, what do we do? Because this will happen again, and yeah, this time we have flood insurance now.
I'll tell you what to do. I, I, I'm sorry, I can't, I know what I would do, but I'm not gonna sit here and tell you what I would do in a public meeting. That's for you and, and your neighbors to decide the course of action that you're going to take.
Okay, so if we can't get answers from here, so the, the only other option is to just go after the developers, obviously someone, we have no idea who it is, because we just deal with the builders, and they don't contact us, so that's all we have?
Again, again, I'm, I'm not gonna tell you who to go after, but I, I, you know, and I'm saying that because I have to couch my words, okay? So.
And I, we can tell you that the pipe that we were looking at drained properly before the development came in, and it still drains good now, so, but that's why I'll leave that.
I'll leave it for somebody else.
Yes, ma'am.
You wanna address her questions?
Go ahead. Your question.
My name's Anne Marie, I live at 940 Westway, I'm next door to Tiffany. I just wanna clarify a couple of things. Nathan Sanders, is that the name of the developer who is responsible for the condition of the land that our homes were built on? Is that correct?
I'm not prepared to answer that statement.
And then my other question is, if they're grandfathered in how they developed our land, why doesn't the same thing apply to building codes? I don't understand, they're two, they are the same thing. How you build the land, that the houses that you build on, houses are built to certain codes, they have to meet certain height requirements, and depth requirements, and material requirements, and distance requirements. How does that not apply to the physical foundation of the land that these homes were built on? How were they grandfathered in the condition of the land, but not the condition of the homes?
And I'll answer that one the best I can, because I used to do building inspections for the city prior to the Highlands. The building code changes every so many years, and they just recently went up to the 150, 150 mile an hour wind code. Everything changes with that, but we basically take it from the foundation up with the building code, and that, that comes down from the state, and we get amendments all the time that says, "This is now in place, this is now in place," and that's, that's how we determine what...
That doesn't answer my question. I know that the building codes change.
The building code, it's a different set of rules.
It's still a rule based on how a house is developed.
I'm gonna try to explain it, is the rules that apply with respect to building are the ones that are in effect at the time you apply for a building permit. I'm just, I can smirk at it, but that's what the answer to the question is. It's, the rules that apply are when you, for a building, building a house, building a building, building a store, whatever, are the, are the rules that are in effect on the day that you apply for your building permit.
I'm sorry, I need to show some people on Facebook.
The day that the plat, for the subdivision, where there's no buildings, where you're just laying out the streets, et cetera, that's a different set of regulations, and I know it sounds crazy, but that's just the way it is.
I just wanna say one more thing. A lot of people that I've been in touch with didn't wanna come tonight because they feel the situation is fairly hopeless, and they've lost faith in everyone in this room to help us out, and I stood up for them, I said, "I cannot believe that our city would call a special meeting just for us, just to say, mm, no, you're still on your own." So, I'm pretty disappointed right now.
So, I understand where you're coming from, and let me explain why. Because everyone that lives in the neighborhood is my neighbor, okay? I have been talking with the mayor, talking with the manager, trying to figure this out on the back end, okay? What he is saying and cannot say, we are held legally to certain things we cannot discuss in public meetings, period, okay? All I will say is this right here, you're in the right direction. We are doing everything we can, however, that was plotted in 1970, and we have to go by the 1970s rule, 1996 rule. We have to do that, okay? But we are trying to work on the back end, to get the government to recognize that this was a mess, and somebody needs to step up and help. But unfortunately, because we live in an HOA, and Dominion developed that property, that's where we are. We, those are not city streets, those are not city lights, those are not city anything.
Why are we paying city taxes?
Because you still live in the city. So, hear me out. Hold on, and you can laugh all you want to, because here's the thing, you are, whether or not you live in an HOA or not, you still live in the city, but it is considered a private area. It is a private neighborhood. I mean, that, that's where, that's where we are with that. We, we want to help, but at the end of the day, it comes down... We, we want to help, but at the end of the day, it comes down to the HOA and the developer have to reach out to us and say, we need the city's help. They're not doing that.
How, if, if our HOA is telling us we have reached out to you and you're telling us that they have not, how are we supposed to deal with that?
So this is, this is what I would do. I would ask for proof. Ask for proof that they are reaching out to us. Okay. Hold on, I'll address that to her. Just because she has it in writing, who did they contact? Get it down to the nuts and bolts. If they say they contacted the Board of Commissioners, I haven't seen it since I got elected and sworn in in December. We are trying to help.
Come full of shit.
And, and I get that and I understand that. But we are, and, and I know it does, I truly do. When I got back to our neighborhood after thirty-six hours in an assisted live-in building, I saw what y'all went through. I understand. But we are doing everything, I'm, I promise you, we are doing everything we can on the back end. But at the end of the day, our hands are tied.
Thank you.
My name is Cindy Casey and I'm at eight nine oh Westway. My only issue is I'm really having trouble understanding, I get the nineteen seventies, they bought it, this is how the rules was then. But with Bull and Spring Lakes knowing they have such a drainage issue, at what point could the city step in and say, y'all are going to make the other side a living hell? Because we are, we're draining, I mean, there's parts of the golf courts that's collapsed because of our water. So what, at what point in time did or could or did not the city step in and say, no, sir, y'all are going to ruin our town?
You want to speak to that? It, it all goes back to the fact that I can't turn down a building permit.
Why?
For, for the Highlands, because they have a statutory right.
Ruining your city?
Well, it wasn't ruining the city until this past storm when I had twenty-two inches of rain.
Now that pipe at the golf court has been collapsed for a good long time. I know people that golf there. That pipe comes from our, our community.
This is what you need, everybody needs to understand. If somebody comes to us with a building permit and they meet all the criteria, the state regulates that we must give them a building permit. We have to follow state laws, just, just, I mean, we have local ordinances. But we have to follow state laws that are issued for that.
No.
Nor any, nor any kind of state. If somebody owns a piece of property, anywhere in this city, anywhere in the county, if they meet all the criteria, they can build anything they want to build if they meet it. And even in the past, and it still happens now with Wetlands, a developer can go into the Wetlands and get it delineated. They can pay the, the Army Corps of Engineers and the Army Corps of Engineers give them approval to build. And we can't do nothing about that, not one thing.
Is that something y'all are working on changing as well because we're ruining you?
We cannot stop the Army Corps of Engineers from doing anything because that's the federal government. What we're working on is trying to put stricter, strict, stricter rules in place for building to be done on areas that we know could possibly flood. And that's what we've been working on, how we can get around to be able to do this stuff. I mean, we've been trying to put things in place to make it stricter, to be able to protect people. Because we understood that area down there, it, we know, but there's nothing that we could, that we wouldn't hear. I mean, it's not a good excuse, but we wouldn't hear. But we understood when we got in here, areas that need to be, have stricter ordinance and UDOs in place. And that's what we've been working on, how we can get to that point and do this. And, and I'll give you an example of how, how things work with state too. Because I used to be on Oak Island. You know, they had all the problems with the high-rise houses, the big houses, and they tried to stop all that. Well, we put something in place and the state came back and says, no, you cannot do that. Because one of the biggest lobbyist groups in Raleigh are the home builder associations. And that's a fact. So we try to do what we can. And once we get this in place, it may hold up, but it could come back and they say, no, you can't do that. So it's, we're trying to do what we can to make it stricter, but there's, we can't move into a HOA. Legally move in a HOA and do anything without any kind of request.
This might be out of your realm, so please. At one point in time, can we get rid of our HOA?
Ultimately, yes. Ultimately, you could, there's, there are mechanisms to do that if you get enough people to vote in favor of them.
Do you know how much people that is?
I don't know, I'm not familiar with your, that familiar with your covenants and what they promote, your bylaws.
And if we do get rid of our HOA and us, as a community, reach out to the city and say, okay, they're gone, we need help, will y'all come in and help at that point?
That is our job. That is absolutely our job. But, but before I got rid of the HOA personally, if it was me and I'm speaking myself, I would make sure my developer fixed what needed to be fixed.
Our developer tells us that we, our HOA tells us we cannot dig in our ditches. Our HOA tells us we cannot even remove vegetation out of our ditches. Our HOA tells us we are, we're just there. So the sooner I can get rid of my HOA, it sounds like the better off my home will be and my community will be. One more quick question. If I do start digging in my ditch to get rid of all this debris that's floated from three streets over into my backyard, where I used to have a three and a half foot ditch and now I have a six inch ditch, are y'all going to come arrest me if the HOA calls you because I'm trying to protect my house?
That's between you and the HOA.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, after the October first meeting, WWAY did a news bit and they said that you said you understood our frustrations and we're working with FEMA to get our homes rebuilt and better infrastructure. That was verbatim what they had on the news broadcast. So to date, as we all know, PTC number eight was not declared, it's not on FEMA's website. And last time I checked, not one single person in the neighborhood has gotten any kind of help from any agency except for ourselves. I just, I, I know that you said you're reaching out, please, please, try to do a better job of pushing to get FEMA help for, ninety percent of these people don't have insurance. And we really, really need somebody to not give up on pushing.
I've reached out again today to our representative in Raleigh, asking for him to please help us because he understands too, we need a, a federal FEMA declaration.
We do.
And they're pushing.
We do.
So they are pushing and I have not stopped. I'm still reaching out, trying to push this because I know the western end of North Carolina got damaged, but we're still here, we've still got damaged and it isn't the first time we got damaged. We need that same look on us as the western part too, anywhere else in this country because flooding is flooding no matter where it is. And we need the help, they need to step up and reach out to us and I'm still pushing.
I agree, and it's happened before Helene even hit.
I, 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 I don't stop, I'm relentless and sometimes people hate me for being relentless, but I don't stop.
Please, please continue and don't give up because we have a lot of people that are in fights to ruin. And we're all struggling emotionally and.
I know, but I'm not, I'm not going to stop. I'll keep pushing because we need it for everybody.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Short. My name is Devon Tilly, I live at nine six one Westway and. Sorry. I talk loud but not loud enough. So the, one thing I've heard, I'm a social worker, so this is probably no surprise, sorry y'all, but it's been a lot of us versus them and I hate that crap because I try to work together with people. So one question that I just had is, how can we be a team together so we can come up with a solution to try to help everybody?
Well, thi- this is what I used to tell everybody. Flood the offices of your congressman. Call them, leave messages, make it a point. Because if they don't hear from everybody, they consider everything's happened. And everybody needs to speak out because my voice is there, but it's a lone voice. If everybody speaks out and reaches out and tell your congressman they need to help and get moving, I mean, somebody has to listen. I mean, they really do. Because it, it takes, you hear it all the time, it takes an army to get anything done.
Right.
And we're all one little community, we're a small town. And we need everybody to pitch in, really just get the message out there, we need your help.
And I think the issue is a lot of us feel hopeless. I will say, I've been in a very special situation. We had the least damage, we had two inches throughout the house. So thankfully, with a crap ton of credit card debt, we got it fixed. And one thing that's so important too is, in our clinical therapy world, we have this thing called the hierarchy of needs. And at the very bottom, it is the basic necessities like food, clothing, shelter, then financial, and then we can be prepared to advocate. So one question that I have, because maybe y'all know more than me about this, what can we do to have hope that things will get fixed eventually?
We're still pushing. We know what needs to move through. But on y'all's end, you got to push too.
Right.
I mean, you really do. And we're, we, we know the issues y'all had and it's not like we're ignoring it, we've been pushing it. But you, I don't want to go too far. But you have to work together to get things done. We're still on our end, trying to get it done. But you have to have two people working together to get it done. So we're trying, we just haven't got there. So y'all the ones that got the brunt of it. Maybe it helps out if y'all put the brunt of it back. But we're trying, we've been trying.
We've been willing to.
But, but I understand, I understand y'all's frustration, I really do. Because we've been.
Can we have proof of the, all the like contacting that you made, the pushing that you keep saying you're doing? Like, is there email? Is there a phone call?
We've got me.
I'm just wondering, has it been like just two phone calls to the governor?
I made one phone call right after our meeting. One phone call after our meeting.
Ma'am, can you, uh, can, when you come up?
Emily Pete, nine twenty Westway. And no, I'm not coming up. I have a health condition.
And then I talked.
I'm sorry, what was your address again, ma'am?
Nine twenty Westway.
And I talked to our representative before I came to this meeting today, to tell him we needed help. So I got more response out of, out of him than the governor, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ryan Armstrong, I live at nine ten Westway Road. I'm a simple guy, so I'll just take a simple answer if you wouldn't mind it. You know, everybody's here and spending their time here tonight. But in a yes or no platform, it sounds like there's no immediate relief or recourse as far as the town can do. In a yes, in a yes or no answer, there's nothing, I mean, you're pushing, but I'm saying, us coming here tonight, you can't say this is going to happen, that's going to happen. So there's no recourse. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, appreciate it. Yes, sir. Go ahead, Shannon.
I had a quick question. The Nathan Sanders that we're talking about, he's the one that signed the, all the documents as Secretary of the HOA?
Yes.
Is he still Secretary of the HOA?
And who's in the Architectural Review Committee? Who's in the art?
I'm sorry. I saw that name as a signature and I'm like, same one.
I'm really a little bit more generic in nature, I don't live in the Highlands, but we spent some time in the Highlands right after the storm. Mr. Hargrove, I heard you say that we are following when the plat map was from nineteen seventy or, I apologize, I think actually you said that. Does that leave us in BSL with more lots not yet developed that are also going to fall under this nineteen seventy rule that homeowners coming in aren't going to know about? Question one. One B would be, is there a way that we can create some education? I realize that you taking the onus of that could put you in a precarious position as a city council. However, is there something we can do as a community for the unknowing families that we have in these chairs that may be coming to buy a lot, to put a home on, that is going to fall under the same nineteen seventy position?
So the city has over ninety-five hundred lots that can be developed that are pre-platted.
Back to this nineteen seventy rule, ninety-five hundred.
Forty of the lots in this community are pre-platted that would fall under this nineteen seventy rule. I've raised the alarm bell to the commissioners that if we don't find a way to resolve this issue, then we're going to have this problem like, like is over at the Highlands all over again. I'm going to go back to his point, uh, that we are looking at some, some type of stormwater overlay or a, potentially a change to our UDO that will eliminate the ability of builders to build on a, a great, a great old slab and either ask them to, or require them to build it a raised slab or have a foundation. Because if we can get those, those slabs up off the ground, three or four courses of block, we, if we, if your houses would have been built on a raised slab, uh, it would probably, it would have probably eliminated a lot of the damage that you had. So we're looking at strengthening our UDO to prevent this from happening again in the future. We're looking at stormwater overlays. We're looking at stormwater fees to be assessed and we can start addressing some of these stormwater fees here in the community. But yes, the board, I've made the board perfectly aware that we have to get this under control before this happens again. And, and again, this board that's, as it's sitting here, have we, you know, I've only been working with these guys for about two years now. And so, uh, you know, it's, the speed of government is never fast.
No, no. I tried to change my driver's license, that also didn't answer my calls either. I appreciate that and that's concerning that there's ninety-five hundred more homes. And I appreciate that y'all are working on it. What is, what's the expedience that one might anticipate change coming as a result of your efforts? Is this a three-year effort? You can't forecast the future, I just don't understand. Is this imminent or is this?
Well, it's imminent because our city attorney, I have already, and this has been a month or so ago, even prior to TPC number eight, I've asked him about a stormwater overlay for the community that would help this. We're also bringing some changes, we're going to ask for changes. And typically, what we'll do is bring it to the planning board. The planning board will either recommend it or deny it to the board, we'll have a public hearing. So it could be something really, uh, some of these changes could really conceivably be within, not the overlay, but some of the UDO changes could conceivably be within the next sixty to ninety days.
How can this community help you to be more successful on that mission? Give us homework.
So when we have these public hearings about these text amendments to our UDO, if you think it's something that you support, come out and speak in support of it so that the Board of Commissioners understands what the, what the feelings of the community are.
All right. Another question, I was just jotting things down as I was hearing the volley of dialogue. It raises a question for me when we're talking about the HOA and I, and I love this lady's questions of how do you, you thrown an HOA? I thought that was interesting because I, I don't enjoy HOAs myself. I, I think I hear you say, Mayor, that if an HOA implores you to change the rule of, let's say this nineteen seventy rule of the platted, no. Okay, I heard you wrong.
They can't do that. They can't implore us to change that.
So what can the HOA, if the HOA comes to you, what are they doing?
Well, if they're in dire need. Well, if they're in dire need, like they're flooding or something, and HOA says, can, is there something you can come in here and help us with? Then the city works with the HOA.
Example of what help us with looks like?
Just like when they were flooding. If we need to bring pumps or something in.
Aha. Okay.
Then we would have to work with the HOA to develop an agreement for the city to come in there because they can hold us liable anything we do.
Sure.
We have to have that agreement in place for us to come in and help.
It's going to indemnify you.
So, but we never got any kind of outreach for any of that.
Okay.
That's why we couldn't go in.
Yeah. And I like your suggestion as well. I use it in business all the time. Show, show me the email chain. I realize Tiffany states that there's a response that we did communicate, but I agree that getting the, the actual chain where it's date stamped, it's always better to do things in an email. Their date stamped, they're held as opposed to a text phone call. I also heard you, Mayor, say that, uh, the Home Builders Association are the largest lobbyists to our state government. None of us can compete with the Home Builder Association for monies, bodies, uh, in the attention or the ear of our government officials. If we were to have a desire to become persuasive at best with a Home Builder Association, how would one do that? And what other things? I've written to Representative Rousier myself, and interesting, uh, you're compelling me to do that, actually, after the light change. Within 30 minutes, their office had wrote back and called back, interestingly enough. So, I find Rousier to be responsive. It wasn't what I wanted to hear, but he explained why it wasn't what I wanted to hear. And that's okay with me. We don't always get to win what we want, but the response or the explanation, which I challenge you all every month. I want a response and an explanation. I'm not being combative with you. I just want to know things. So, what can we do on the state level and on the Home Builder Association level? One, to be heard. Two, to be compelling. Three, to be authentic. And four, to be persuasive.
Well, whenever new rules come out in the state, it's always good because you can go on their, their site and you can see the new things they're proposing. So, if something comes out that you see that doesn't look right as far as home building and stuff, you can always oppose that and give your opinions. Because trust me, there's a lot of stuff that comes down. And a lot of people don't know. You can go on their site and look at what's getting ready to come before them.
Is it out of turn for the city to make us aware of those things? Because I'm not looking to build a house, so I'm not going to look at-
Sometimes, sometimes we'll get the heads up. And we know it's coming down. But a lot of times, it'll just be up there and we don't know. We have no clue until they're ready, get ready to pass it. So, it's a lot of stuff that'll get buried in it. Sometimes, we'll get some notification if somebody else is opposed of it with the mayors and stuff speaking out and being able to do this and be able to look and see what they're talking about. That's one of the things, uh, like a lot of the mayors, if something comes up, they'll post everything so I can see what's going on, if it affects the building or anything like that.
Right.
So, I try to get outreach on that when we see something that's not right. We fight back against it.
That's all I had written.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Terry Pointe, 509 Eagle Land.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, I understand thoroughly that y'all are dealing with a 50-year-old law and that you are pretty much hamstringing. So, how can you be proactive? It sounds like, as you said, we need to be proactive. We can't fight the homeowners' association for the reason the lady just said. What would the legal constraints be? Like, when I drive down 87 to go to Lowe's Food and there's a new development there waiting to see the houses, why can't we take out a billboard that says, "This is a potential flood zone. This could be like the Highlands." Can we demonstrate in front of this property like signs?
Well, I think if, we don't have nothing to do like, are we at 87 and building all the homes? But if you did anything like that, you'd probably have to get permits to be able to protest. And, and then if you're going to put a billboard up stating facts, this is, if you want to weigh in, you probably have to have proof of those facts. So, it, it, the law's crazy. And they, and things get turned, things get twisted a lot of times. So, uh, I can't tell you what you can do, what you can't do. But I would be careful what I put a billboard or something up because they, they would-
It just seems like the only way to affect the builders is to hit them in their bottom line. And if those houses would not sell, they'd quit building.
You'll find out so many times, if somebody owns a lot, property, lots, if, if they meet any, aim the criteria, they're allowed to build. And there's nothing a city can do. I mean, there's nothing the county can do. They have to follow the rules of the state. I used to tell everybody, we're like, we're like children and, and the state's your parents. And they tell you what you can and can't do. And if you do something out of turn, they smack you.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I ask one more question? Lori Swieder, 879 Needles again. What would you recommend if we were concerned about trying to slow down or stop clearcutting and development in general in the city? Because I know there's some that are impacted, that are, your hands are tied because of the grandfathered detail. But what would you do if you were us to try to slow down? It seems like the development is rampant. And overall, the more vegetation you remove, as everyone knows, the more prone you are to flooding.
Right.
And we're already a low area. We're already a lot of wetlands. What would you recommend if people want to really put a stop to this, to, to overdevelopment? That could potentially cause all this harm?
You want my honest truth answer?
Yes, please.
You would lose. I mean, as far as answer, if you're trying to stop some amazing development, you'd lose. There's that, there's that, and there's that much power that even we didn't like. We would get no attention paid to us.
That's unfair.
Because property rights of people, they can build when they want to build, anytime they want to build. And, and that's, that's just the way it is. I mean, there's no, if they own the property, they can build.
The more that happens, the, the more peril we're all in because-
And we're trying. The, the, the things city can do is they can put stricter rules in as far as replanting trees. And, and that's about it.
Okay.
So, and that's what things we're trying to strengthen our ordinance up and our UDOs up, to be able to control some of that, to be able to handle it. But you, and the truth is, you can't stop people from building. That's just the, the truth.
Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. And then, then you next.
Hello. I'm Diana Sahoney. I live on-
Hold on, sir, and pull it down with the clothes?
Okay. It's better? Okay. Hi, my name is Diana Sahoney. I live on Downing Road, um, right next to Westway. And I want to discuss about the trenches that the Highlands have implemented in our, um, all of our backyards. Based on how it's affecting my property at the moment, it's completely flooded. There is no movement of water going to any outlet. It's also blocked up by, uh, trees right next to my neighbor. At this moment, I believe Logan Holmes did not implement any, um, clearance next to the property that's next to me. And that property in front of him is completely for, like, there's so much vegetation there. They did not clear it out properly. And I believe the trenches that were implemented just didn't satisfy, satisfy any standards in which a trench should be implemented. So, I want to know, what is your due diligence here? Because if they didn't properly install the trenches, how did you guys do your diligence to make, ensure that they did their responsibility? And how does that affect us now? Because at this point, it doesn't look like they, they implemented a proper trench for us to have proper flow of water when these storms come in.
Couple answers to the question. What, what is, Brunswick County regulates stormwater. Okay? The town had, the, the city has no interest whatsoever in the legal interest in the stormwater trenches. That's something that would be, if it's under any regulation, it's under the county's stormwater regulations. The easements themselves, they're, they're not dedicated to the town. They're, I guess they're public or to the HOA.
Yeah. They put that responsibility on us.
Right.
But they also said that they have the accountability of implementing trenches properly. So, if this is not done properly, and who did their due diligence to ensure that they did it properly?
I, I agree. If they're going to be done, they've got to be done properly.
Yeah. There's no tubing in the back. It's just the instill. They just put a ditch in there.
Well, the, the builder or developer ultimately, because they're the ones who create the trench, are supposed to do it the right way.
And who ensures that they do that? Is there an audit done on their build?
Again, there'd have to be an inspection by somebody.
That they pay?
Excuse me?
That they pay? An inspection from someone that they pay? So that- So, the inspection is not done by the city? Is it done by, by Brunswick County?
No.
There is no inspection?
Not even done by the city. And I'm not really sure what we're talking about because I don't remember there being-
There are trenches.
On, on the plat, they're not there. So-
And also, also it says, "Also easements for drainage and utilities are reserved, as shown on the recorded plat of the subdivision." If they have not noted it there, they are voiding this contract and they're just not doing things properly. So, if you're saying there are no trenches, this document is called the Declaration of Covenants and Conditions and Restrictions of the Highlands at Boiling Spring Lakes.
I think there was an amended plat that was recorded about the same time as that, that showed drainage. The only difference between that and this old one is that the one that was recorded more recently only had some of the streets on it and it showed drainage easements and ditches between some of the lots.
Okay.
And easements, easements along the front of some of the lots, easements along the, the rear, and easements between some of the lots.
Okay. Are they supposed to, I mean, this is from the Brunswick County of Deeds, and it was May 2020. So, are they not responsible for updating that and noting that on their plat?
Like I said, I, I think that there was, and I'm not positive about the timing, but I think that there was an amended recombination plat, is what they called it, that was recorded about the same time as those covenants. That shows some, and this is done by the owner developer of the property, that, uh, shows some of those drainage easements. Doesn't show detail about what the swells are supposed to look like or what the ditches or trenches are supposed to look like, but shows where they're supposed to be located.
Okay. And so, how can I know that they did their due diligence against the standards of Brunswick to ensure we did have proper trenches in place? And if they, if we see that they didn't fulfill that standard, whose responsibility is it to fix it? Like, do I have to get a lawyer to prove to them that they did not fulfill that standard?
I hate to say it, but I mean, the property owners in the development are the ones who, who are affected by this, are the ones who are going to have to pursue it, which are the, the building developers.
Well, thank you for your time, guys.
Yes, sir. I know you were in the speech.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Asen. I live at 670 Mohawk Drive, which is now a river. And I would like to know, is the city going to get any more pumps? To help pump, pump the road when it floods? This is like, I've there, lived there since 1995. And this is the third time. The whole road from where you turn on the Mohawk has flooded all the way down.
Excuse me, sir. But this isn't, this is, this meeting's strict about the Highlands, I'm sorry, sir.
Absolutely does. They're not the only ones that got flooded out.
Yeah.
Because they put water in my yard right now.
Okay. I apologize, sir.
That's all it does, too. Washington town.
Yes, sir.
My name's Dave Devon. I'm at 911 Westway. And I think it's more about just the fact that this development was allowed to be built. I'm, I'm not in going forward with you guys because I don't trust you guys to get anything done. It's, it's what's happened before. These people are out $30,000, $40,000, $50,000. I mean, you're putting the cart before the horse. You got to deal with this drainage issue way before you put this development in. I mean, it's, you know, water on the bridge now, no pun, but this is stuff you needed to adjust three years ago before they built these homes up here. And as far as maintaining these ditches, maintain them and doing what? Take trash out of them or dig the plants up out of them that absorb water? I'm, I'm kind of hazy about maintaining the ditches. Maintaining the part under the driveway, too? We'd go do crawl down your hands and knees and shovel out some dirt? I mean, we maintain them. The water's got to have someplace to go. It's not maintaining the ditches. The water's got nowhere to go. And you're doggone lucky that that dam wasn't done. What a disaster it would have been had that dam been full. So, you're lucky that the ineptness that didn't allow that get to get done happened not to bite you on the rear end. Well, this, it'd be a lot bigger than it is now. So, it's platted back in the 60s, vested rights, whatever. I mean, i- if, if it was cool to build all the toxic waste dump in 1972 and anybody doing anything about it to try to not keep that from happening? I mean, progress of man, things change. You learn stuff. You shouldn't have built on this swamp, just plain and simple. That's it. It shouldn't have been allowed to get done. Well, i- if you saw something and just hoped it wouldn't happen and allowed it, you're complicit.
We're not allowing it. The state allows-
Well, if, if it was okay to build a, a subdivision on a toxic waste dump, would vestas rights have covered that? Exactly. I mean, it's okay to a degree, right? Hoping it don't flood. I don't trust you guys to get anything done. I hope I'm wrong.
Just a quick question. Um, so before the developers bought the land or whoever owned the land for construction, and there was no HOA, right? Who is responsible of that, like, land, like, the, just the way it was before construction was made? So, you're saying the HOA is responsible now?
Whoever owned the land before is, was responsible for all of it. So, when they thought it-
So, the owner of the land?
Yes.
Regardless of if it had flooded during Florence and there was no building or anything else, it was that landowner's responsibility?
It's all it is.
So, even though it affected you or the Gulf course or the lake or whatever, or anybody else around you before this was even an actual development? The landowner. And they didn't get any recourse after all that?
Well, it, it's developer the one that has it now. And he's had it for, I don't know how long. But who are, it's just like, if my land, I knew what my land did. So, I came in and put swells on my land because I knew I didn't want to flood out the next house.
Right.
But that was my responsibility as landowner to make sure I did that. And I, I, I can't or make a landowner do that. That's, that's part of their, if you own land, that's part of what you have to do, is make sure. And that's what a lot of people used to do in the past. They would build their lots up and flood out their neighbors. And a lot of those rules did change. But a lot of these planted lands that had been owned for ages and ages and ages, they've been following those same rules. It's been in the 60s and 70s. And there's nothing you can do to enforce those 60 and 70 rules. That's why we've been trying since we came in is trying to find something that's going to stick, that we can enforce and make it stricter for people when they build.
I, okay. But the, the thing is, is that it's been a problem for so many years. And the city has known that. has known that. Or if the city knows that and they tell the county that this is a problem and some sort of drainage, because those roads were already there, those roads were already there. So what I'm saying is that if the drainage has been an issue in that area in general, it's going to affect everybody, not just that specific area.
Not necessarily. That area could have flowed perfectly and worked perfectly until everybody started, they started building and digging out these ditches and, because we've always been in mind, if you're going to do something and water's going to drain, it should be engineered. And that's the way it should be because you need to know where the water's draining.
Yeah, okay. So the land is not built with the Gulfview where he lives, right? Before Florence, it was three years after, right? So it flooded in that area during Florence. Don't you think there should be somewhere, someplace for new homeowners especially that has been coming into the neighborhood to at least tell us this information anywhere? Shouldn't it be like a disclosure, disclosure anywhere at all? I mean, if you can't do anything?
I mean, that, that wouldn't be the town's obligation. That would be the owner seller's obligation to revise. I mean...
I'm just asking, I'm just asking a question.
And if there's a history of flooding on the property, I think that is...
Was never disclosed.
A significant issue that perhaps should be disclosed.
Okay, thanks.
Actually, this, sorry, these vested rights that you, do they transfer?
Yes, they run with the land.
So when I bought my place, now I have the vested rights. Therefore, I am the landowner and therefore I can do whatever the heck I want to with my land? I mean, it's okay for the HOA to not follow...
You, you own your lot, you own the house, you have a lot.
But the HOA didn't have to follow y'all's rules because I'm vested, I'm, I have the vested rights now that was established in 1970, right? Them are my vested rights now. So if my developer didn't have to follow...
With respect to your, with respect to your lot, you have the rights with respect to your lot. You also have the obligations that are in the covenants, which the HOA runs.
How did they still own my vested rights?
You have the right to use your property. When you bought it...
However, I want to.
Wait, wait. When you, when you bought your property, you also acquired the obligations that were in your declaration.
So how come, how, how come the HOA can follow the rules from 1970 with vested rights, but Cindy can't follow the rules from 1970 with my vested rights?
I'm not sure I understand the question. I get what you're saying, but I'm not sure how...
How, how do they keep their vested rights over me?
Because I think for big reasons because they formed that HOA. So they, they regulate what you can and can't do. And that's the bad thing.
So basically, vested rights is kind of a, first of all, a... A jiggy kind of thing? I mean, it's kind of the jiggy thing. It really depends on how you look at them.
Well, it's a different set of, it's a different set of rights.
So they still have some rights to my land?
Because you signed the covenant?
Yep. Yeah. Well, we tried to answer as much as we can.
Oh, 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 yes, sir. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Russell Miller. I live at 901 Gulfview Road. As this great nation was built, there was many landowners. And when a state or a city needed a road, what did they do? They used a big word called eminent domain. I think you all need to look it up. Somebody should read the definition to this public right now. If you have it, I'd like to have somebody read it so you know what it means. So here's how you do it. Read it. This is my wife, Barbara Miller.
I'm Barbara Miller. Eminent domain is the power of the government.
Speak into the microphone, please. Thank you.
Eminent power.
I'll read it. Eminent domain is the power of the government to take private property for public use in exchange for just compensation. And you can read on. What I'm trying to say is, you have a bunch of people whose need outweighs a property owner or municipality per se. You have the right to go in and say, "We as the city need to do this in the name of eminent domain." Put down, a lawyer can put his foot down. And you can supersede that and compensate the money for yourselves later. This is one of the things I was trying to tell you about being a machinist for 42 years. I had to get it done. That's why Israel can fend off 200 bombs in a minute's notice. I'm telling you what I'm telling you for a reason. You don't have to sit here and go back and forth. You can get grant money, you know you can. People will rush in when you tell them, "I have an area that needs eminent domain. You can get on there, GoFundMe. Why don't we do a GoFundMe? Why don't we all cry to a bunch of people and say, 'This group needs more than the one entity that owns the property than the HOA itself.'" Think about that. Read it over again. Look at Highway 70, look at 40. All the landowners went, "You can't take my living room. My grandmother looked out the window at that mound." And they said, "I'm sorry, I don't know what to tell you." Go to this landowner and you say, "I don't know what to tell you," but you're done. You're not going to disrupt thousands of people for the sake of your filthy lucre. I'm done.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Lyndon Matoldi. I just want to get some clarification. I know we're working on getting FEMA in here to help us, right? Trying to. They have an HOA. If FEMA comes in, will it supersede the HOA?
I don't think it will. No, I mean FEMA, FEMA is really, they'd be providing financial assistance, I think is what they'd be doing. And that wouldn't affect or change the covenants that govern property owners and the association, the HOA. So I don't think there'd be any relationship between FEMA and the HOA.
That was my first question. The second question is, for FEMA to assist these people, sometimes they demand that they bill back according to FEMA specifications. Sometimes they have to raise their property. If they're on a slab, they want them raised. That'll bankrupt these people? Like fixer-friend down on 17?
Yeah, but I...
Is it bad to worse? Are we going to hurt them more?
I don't think so.
I hope not. I mean, we...
Hopefully, we'll get some drainage issues off and stuff.
I don't think it's going to bother them.
Because that's my fear is they come in and say, "Well, they're all on a slab, they have to be raised up, there's no other solution."
We're working at trying to get them in here for the damage that it's caused. One thing, stuff that we had to do part of the city, we can't afford to do this stuff. And we need FEMA to be able to come in here and help out with the funding to be able to do this. So that's why we're trying to push everything because we still have roads that need to be repaired. We've got a bridge we almost lost.
About the roads.
A bridge we almost lost with a cut in the city in half. We need to get all this stuff fixed. And what I've tried to put out there is, we need help.
I'm willing to help you. I've volunteered many times, Jeff, to just give me a call.
Flood the offices or representatives, federal representatives, because they're the ones that have to fight for us. And all the voices that can be heard is better than one single voice coming here trying to say, "We need money." So that's the biggest thing that anybody can do, is flood your, your federal, state, your House of Representatives and say, "Look, fight for us. We need it. We've gotten flooded too many times."
Absolutely. The only one that even responded to me was Hal Weatherman. He's not even in office yet. I hope he gets in office because he did respond at least. I got a lot of, "Thank you, you want to vote for me?" kind of things, but as a group, who would you suggest that we target as a group?
We rode around with Representative Rousers' team for about two hours, wasn't it? Rousers is a good person to contact. We, didn't we reach out to Tillis' rep? Didn't we talk to her and let her know what was going on?
I got no response from them.
But Tillis is another one. And then you've got Bud, Ted Bud.
Ted Bud, yeah.
So all these people who represent us needs to be reached out to and let them, and tell them, we need them to push for this federal declaration.
Does it need to be signed a petition? What's the best way?
Well, the best way is reach out to their office. He won't...
Got responses, yeah.
Bud will keep them going. Because you, you'll always hear, you'll always hear this, when something major's going on and their office gets flooded with cars. You speak out, talking about that. The only way they're going to listen is if they get flooded. And, and we have to be the ones that flood and say, "Look, we need help in our area because we've been flooded time and time again and we need a federal declaration to help us."
Absolutely. On that behalf, could you put up on the website, the contact numbers for all of us?
Can we get all that put up there?
Well, like, get together and swamp these people. Right now, all they want to do is get reelected. Like I said, that's all they got. Can you give me 50 bucks for my reelection? But I understand that, but we're hurting here.
We're just important as anybody in this country. And we need to make sure our voices are heard. And I'm a lone voice and I can't, they're not going to listen to a lone voice.
All right, well, we'll make an army out of you, Jeff. Just give us the information and we'll go for it.
Get things done, you have to work as an army.
Absolutely.
And that's what we're trying to do.
All right, let's be a team and give us that information and we'll do it.
We'll put their numbers and contacts.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
How can we help individual people? We don't know, some of us are here, we don't know some of the people personally. I mean, do we have people who need food? Do we have people whose furniture has been ruined? Do we have people who are going to need legal representation and don't have the money? Should we be raising money for them to pay a lawyer or for them to do something? Some of us are here because we want to help our neighbors even though we don't live next door.
That's a very good question. And I think we need to maybe look into being able to, maybe if we have devastation around the community, if somebody needs something, we create some kind of site that everybody can say, "Hey, I need this, can you help me with this?" Because I noticed, I looked at Facebook today and there was, somebody was getting rid of furniture and letting everybody know if they needed it. Well, it don't matter. We need it, I mean...
Well, I'm just saying...
But, but maybe that's something we need to... Because I can tell you, this isn't going to be the first devastation we have living so close to the coast. We're going to have storms and that's just a fact. So maybe we need to look at things, how we can do, be a little bit more proficient in trying to help people out when they need it. So that's a good, good suggestion. I like that. If that's it, thank y'all for coming and listening to us. We heard y'all. We did hear y'all. And I'm going to continue to fight. So I'm not stopping, I never stop, so... If, if we get something from FEMA, I'll post it and make sure it's proper.
Motion to adjourn. I'd motion, I sure would, second time. All with favor?